Welcome to this, the regular meeting of the council of the Corporation of Central Elgin. It is Monday, January 13th here in the council chambers. We welcome those who are in the audience as well as those who are joining us online. If I may ask those in attendance if they would rise for the National Anthem, please. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the Maquis Treaty that was signed by the Weyandot and Anishinaabe nations, including ancestors of Chipewas of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hottasani, Atawandurang, and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. Council, any disclosures of peculiar interest, please? I'd like to get a mover and a second or for the adoption of the minutes, please. Councillor Bachmann, Deputy Mayor Noble, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by councillor Bachmann, seconded by deputy mayor Noble, that the minutes for the special meeting of council dated December 12th, 2024, and regular meeting of council dated December 16th, 2024 be adopted.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. We have two delegations with us this evening. The first is the Port Stanley 200 Trees for 200 Years Committee. Nancy Moore, I believe, is coming forward to make a presentation. And as always, Nancy, if you could remember to press the button and state your name so everyone knows who you are, thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Moore from Port Stanley. Mayor and members of council, we are pleased, the team is pleased, to share with you an update on the Port Stanley Tree Project. Firstly, we would like to thank Central Elgin Council, Central Elgin staff, and the Port Stanley community for their guidance and assistance. It is amazing when a community comes together what can be accomplished. The community is restoring a natural environment as well as providing a beautiful natural space for all. Seven years ago, with Carolini and Canada's guidance, the eco-class students were asked, what would the berm want? And a resounding response was trees. Thanks to all our stakeholders, this has been started. Planting, Second Nature have planted 60 of the larger trees in the groves, as you can see in the photo there. And as soon as the weather allows, this year's eco-class students will replant the smaller trees into these groves that were planted by last year's students. They couldn't do it this year because it got a little cold. As the community has been so supportive of this project, the team and students are going to continue the project as per the proposal approved in June 2023. The steps are shown on the update that you have with you tonight. At this time, I would like to introduce two eco-class students from this year to share their information with you, Finn Lowensbury and Simon Carrier.
Hello, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Finn, and I'm a student of the Grade A eco-class at Kettle Creek Public School.
My name is Simon, and I'm also a Kettle Creek student in the eco-class. We are very honored to have the opportunity to project our project to the community.
This past fall, our class had the opportunity to not only watch the work being done at the berm and see the trees go in, but we also got to meet many of the generous donors from our community. Meeting these donors and seeing some of the past students who worked on this project before me really helped understand, like, the... Sorry. The...
Sadly, we were not able to plant the trees in the fall because of the weather would not work with us, so we will be planting them in the spring. Also, the students of our class were able to get us a grant, so with the money, we will be using it to get seedlings and pot them also in the spring.
This year, we are honored to be the stewards of this first acre, and for the next acre, we will pass our stewardship on to the next eco-class.
When the trees are standing tall, I hope to see young students of Kettle Creek Public School to be playing manhunt in our forest that we have worked on. I am so excited of that we are part of the project, and thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Finn, and thank you, Simon.
Are there any questions about the presentation or the update?
I'll start, if that's okay, Nancy. And thanks to you and the eco-class, of course. So now, what's next?
What's next is that, as the update, what we're going to do is plant the little seedlings that were supposed to be planted in the fall, they'll be planted in the spring, and then we move on to another set of groves, sort of mirroring the ones that are there. And with the money that has been left over from the project, because the community has been so generous in their, in their work, and also Second Nature, and everybody pulling together, it's just been amazing.
Very good. Do any of the other councillors have any questions? I'm going to ask a supplementary then. What would you, what's the biggest challenge been, Nancy?
Over the seven years?
Yeah, I mean, you've come a long way. I mean, at the end of the day, it's kind of interesting to find out. I mean, you've been successful, others in your shoes have not been. I'm just curious what the biggest challenge was.
Biggest challenge? Well, it's been so nice working with people. I think the challenge has been sort of coming together with, with Central Elgin and realizing what we can do as a community. And I think that has been, that's been amazing, and we've, we've made that happen, and I think that's spectacular.
Good. Councillor Bachmann, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. I just wanted to congratulate yourself and the students for making that presentation tonight. I know it's not easy to get up and talk in front of people, but you guys did a marvelous job, and I applaud the efforts, and especially your eco-class and the teachers and the staff involved at Kettle Creek, and continue with the good work.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
To you, Mayor. Super excited to see this project at the point that it's at. It was a little bit to get it started, and there's some challenges along the way, but to see it get to that stage is, is really exciting, and to see it grow will be even nicer. And congratulations to everybody that was involved. It was, it was awesome to see that happen.
We do, we're very fortunate. Any other comments from any other councillors? Seeing none, again, our thanks, we appreciate you keeping, keeping us surprised of this. We wish you good fortune as you continue, and I expect we'll be in communication in the near future. Thank you very much, and thanks to everyone who's here from the committee as well as other champions of the Port 200 Trees, thank you. Our second presentation this evening is from the Hospice of Elgin. I think Laura Sherwood, I believe, came in. I saw my friend Laura. Laura, if you'd come forward, please, we look forward to hearing an update from you. Very good.
Thank you. I'm Robert Ferno, this is Laura Sherwood, both on behalf of Hospice of Elgin. So, a very good evening to Mayor Sloan and members of council, and it is definitely a pleasure to be here. And thank you very much for the kind opportunity for us to provide an update on our Hospice of Elgin progress, project, and the remarkable progress that our entire team has made in making this facility and its services a reality. So, I am Robert Ferno, I am the board chair of the Hospice of Elgin. Laura Sherwood is our interim executive director, and we're here to share that 2025 is going to be an incredibly exciting year for our community. And to express just how incredible this year is going to be, I'm going to let Laura highlight just a few of the things that are coming very, very shortly to the community. Laura?
Great, thank you. Let me just switcheroo here. So, I'm very excited to talk about, obviously, our Hospice of Elgin, and for those who haven't had an opportunity to see the progress around this project, we've brought some slides to do a bit of a show and share. You can see on the screen, we say, "Welcome to the cottage." This is like no healthcare facility you've likely seen. And so the cottage, we've intentionally designed because the feedback of this community. This hospice will be designed with a cottage in mind, which means families and friends will have an opportunity to gather, an opportunity to connect with nature, and an opportunity where life slows down and they get to focus on those things that matter most, because hospice is really a place where individuals and their families will spend their final moments and receive expert palliative care here in our community. So just sharing a little bit about the design, there's four key aspects of our design of our hospice. You can see the orange section, which is our resident wing, so those will be private suites for individuals to spend their final moments. But we also have a really special piece of this facility, which is unique to Elgin County. So the pink section, which is our palliative care hub, which is the space where individuals will be able to come in hospice, access care, but go back home. So no longer is hospice a final destination, but a place where you can go and access care while you continue your journey at home with those you love. But when hospice is needed, of course, you will be able to come and access the 24/7 private suites, which have been intentionally designed with that cottage-like environment. And so the center of the building, which is green, is truly the cottage. That is a place for gathering, for families to spend those final moments, places like dining room and kitchen and living room. Families can curl up and have popcorn and watch movies. They can also celebrate anniversaries and birthdays and life's moments in our community. Living does not stop in our community, even when somebody is nearing end of life, and hospice is there to help support that journey continuing. So 125 individuals in our community, each and every year, will spend their final moments here at hospice. And the community hub, where care is accessed but individuals can return home, will care for over 400 individuals each and every year. It's a small but mighty facility that will provide excellent care in such an incredibly wonderful type of design. So let's see where our progress is at. So you can see that the facility, which is located on South Edgeware Road, right beside Monsignor Morrison School, is tucked in the woods. This site was intentionally designed and selected because the opportunity to honor our rural community. We wanted to ensure that we are not only just having access to beautiful vistas, but really tucked in the woods, so individuals and families feel connected to a therapeutic environment, even when healing is not an option. So you can see the building starting to take shape. It's about 17,000 square feet, and the aerial view makes it probably look a little bit smaller than it really is, but you can see this is no longer just a vision for our community, progress is well underway. As the seasons change, you can never, you can no longer see the lush green trees, but you can start to see our building come to life. And so the timber structure at the very front is starting to illustrate some of the nods to that natural element. So the cottage will have timber, stone, water anchored in the building in honor of all of our ports here to celebrate our community, and also fire. So all those natural elements will be a part of supporting individuals and families who come to hospice. You can see the continued timber structure. Construction, not only on the outside of the building, is about 90% completed, but the interior work has also begun. So I wanted to share this photo because this shows you that the drywall on the private suites has been completed, and you can see this is the space where the residence suites exist, so individuals will be spending their time in these private suites. But what's a bit unique about this is you can see the size of the door. Those patio doors will open and allowing the beautiful beds to wheel right out so that individuals can enjoy the beauty of the day, eat breakfast, gaze at the stars, or just spend time with their family. In addition to that patio door that allows the beds to go out, you can see the size of that window. So that connection to nature and the view that you see there will be the view for somebody who is dying in our community. Incredibly large windows, connection to nature, natural light, and space for people to breathe on what can be a very, very difficult journey. That hospice suite is just an example of the continued progress. Again, no longer a vision, but we are targeting to have doors open this summer. So where are we at with the progress? So construction started in the spring of last year. The process for construction is 12 to 14 months, so a fairly quick build. We are starting the process of recruiting our staff so that we can get ready for those doors open. Construction is scheduled to be completed this May, so if we count February, March, April, May, we are months away from bringing this building to life. But our work, of course, is not done. In addition to completing the building, we need to furnish that facility with healthcare-grade equipment that supports the 24/7 care that needs to happen onsite. We also need the comforts to be able to support the families who are also going through this journey with their loved ones. Hospice provides as much care for the families as we do the individual. And then, of course, you can see our doors are scheduled to open this summer, but we need your help. So we're here to chat with you a little bit further about that. And I'm going to turn it over to Robert again to chat with you a little bit about one of the pieces of equipment that's incredibly important for our hospice.
Thank you, Laura. So, oh, the huddle bed. One of the most important features of our care will be the unique beds that you're seeing pictured here. And a bed is just not a bed, and it's not just another piece of equipment. It's a place where precious moments matter. Our special beds will extend to allow loved ones to cuddle together and to demonstrate the true cuddleness. We had a few of our volunteers share a bit of a personal experience. As you can see, they'll have unique safety features to prevent falls, along with state-of-the-art monitoring and support technologies, and our beds will also have enhanced mobility, making them easier to pilot outside, as Laura had mentioned, onto each suite's private patio. So this does bring us back to the Capitol Campaign, and I just want to mention that this, the beds themselves are only a fraction of the furniture and equipment needs that we are challenged by. That's pretty much everything in today's economy. The cost of medical-grade fixturing, unfortunately, continues to escalate. So into the investment. End of life is a reality that each and every one of us will face. Many peoples, families, and organizations across our community have already supported hospice. They recognize this product is critical, this project is critical and a meaningful undertaking. With barely six months left in the runway of our Capitol Campaign, we desperately need to generate $1.5 million to get doors open this summer. We sincerely hope that Central Elgin will kindly consider a gift, no, an investment of $100,000 to partner with us to open Elgin County's first and long overdue hospice, a facility and service which will impact lives this year and continue to benefit families in Elgin for generations to come. This $100,000 includes both a doors-open tour of the cottage and recognition on our donor digital wall as well. And we do truly thank you for caring about and caring for our community and for the continued leadership that you have shown, because very simply, it matters. So the needs for our hospice have never been greater, neither have the stakes have been in ensuring that the doors open come July. A number of families and individuals we could have helped and supported over those years is deeply concerning. It's tragic, in fact, when you think of it. But once operational, 500 people in Elgin will benefit each and every year, so the impact and value of this campus of care that we're talking about stretches well beyond this. Consider just for a moment some of the additional benefits of this. The creation of 30-plus new jobs and hundreds of volunteer opportunities. The recruitment of physicians. The new specialized care that will come within our community as opposed to us having to send individuals out of it. Alleviation of some of the pressures on other providers, such as our primary caregivers who currently carry the burden of responsibility for care, and of course, our hospital. Some of the faces here, added to hundreds of passionate and community-minded individuals, have been involved in bringing the vision of hospice of Elgin to life. So as we complete this final leg, this very short final leg of this project, we need your help and hope you choose to join us. We are in this together, no question. So thank once again for your time this evening and for your kind consideration.
Robert, thank you, and our thanks to Laura as well. Council, let me, we've had the presentation, and I, I opened the floor. Councillor Griffin.
Through you, is this something that we could add in as a consideration within our budget so that we can look at what our different levels of increase are and how this could fit within it?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Bachmann.
I've witnessed Sakura House in Woodstock. The services they provide and the comfort they provide, in my opinion, are almost priceless. I understand they're, they're in need of fundraising. It's something I truly think we need to discuss and, and look into seriously as, as a budget consideration. I think this is very needed in Elton County, and I think it would benefit not only the residents of Central Elgin, but the entire county, so.
Thank you. If I may, the name, Laura and I met last, I forget when, last week, I guess it was. What surprised me a bit was the name, that you have a naming sponsor, but let's say it's Smith. It's not going to be this Smith Cottage, correct? Like, it's not going to be called The Cottage. Sorry, could I ask for a microphone? We have people that watch online that can't hear, but thank you, sorry to interrupt, Laura.
Nope, just kind of summarizing that there will be an opportunity for this donor to honor and celebrate them in the naming, but we will be continuing to maintain Hospice of Elgin. It is important that hospice is really a place for everyone in Elgin County. We are here to support all families, and the cottage is, is a secondary brand that has been intentionally designed to create a welcoming environment, honoring and celebrating really the best of our community, the natural components of our community, the waterfront in our community. And so those are familiar sights and sounds that really will be anchored in the experience when families come to, to the cottage. So the cottage is a secondary brand. Hospice of Elgin will continue to be a name that moves forward into operations.
Thank you. And just to restate, you have not received any funding from the county, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, I have written about this, our friend Joe Konickney's here, and I wrote a letter to the Elmer Express after the county, for, for reasons that, for me, were, deserved a second look, didn't support the MRI at the hospital or the hospitals, two things which I think differentiate and differentiate our community in a way which, to councillor Bachmann's point, to me, is priceless. If you look at the building blocks for, you know, attracting physicians or people that are looking to invest here, you know, we have different, we can look at the books and we can look at things that are very difficult to put a price on. And, and my, my concerns about the county have been made, and what we were to follow up with was is that, and I believe councillor, or deputy mayor, who's the councillor at Elgin County, we were told that they were changing the, the rules and regulations and would then consider things like the MRI and the hospice. We're talking about an organization which, you know, supports the art gallery, a warranted and important part of our community, but when those of us that have experienced hospice care, as councillor Bachmann has, I sat on a hospice board, and those of us who have had colleagues and friends that have used the MRI, we realize that there's, there's different things that stand out as what I would consider to be essential investments. So in addition to what the two councillors have suggested, I would like that we add this to, I don't know, Ms. Hurd, if we are asking the county to reconsider or to consider after they made changes to their donations, what's the word, they made, their, their application process, that we could revisit this as part of 2025 budget, and that our committee would do the same here, and that surely, together with the, the two of us, we can do something to contribute. Is that something that we could do? I, I think you had something to do, you'd put forward a, a motion, does it need to be altered, or how can we? And first of all, sorry, does anyone else wish to speak? Deputy Mayor.
Through you, Mayor, I'm happy to move to send a letter to the county in support of hospice.
Pardon me, if I may, I think we need to also, the, the comments that were made by the two councillors about Central Elgin taking a look during, doing their due diligence, if you will. Ms. Hurd, any comments on how we would achieve both, please?
Through the mayor, I would suggest that should council choose to, to offer support, do it twofold, that the council consider as part of the 20, our own 2025 budget deliberations as we're about to embark on those, and secondly, provide, as Deputy Mayor Noble indicated, provide a, a letter of support to the county and request that they consider the ask as well. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Leach has one proposal, we'll need a second one, is that fair? Ms. Leach, you want to comment, or do you, we don't want to put you on the spot.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. If I may, offer a draft resolution for council's consideration at this time, that correspondence be provided to the county of Elgin with support in principle for a financial contribution to Hospice of Elgin, given the priority and intended benefit that hospice represents to all residents of Elgin County, and that the request from Hospice of Elgin for $100,000 in financial support be referred to the Finance Committee for consideration as part of the 2025 Central Elgin budget.
Mover and a second, there. Deputy Mayor, councillor Bachmann, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you for your presentation. Let's start this, it's an ongoing discussion. We're in halfway through January, I know there's some timing and issues like that, but happy to have this, and we appreciate your time, and look forward to seeing if we can't contribute as a group, as one or the other or both. happy to have this and we appreciate your time and look forward to seeing if we can't contribute, uh, as a group, as one or the other or both. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Moving forward, correspondence requiring action. Governance Committee meeting minutes from December 16th, 2024. Recommendation, can I get a mover in a second, or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the RFP for Integrity Commissioner Services be reissued with more robust criteria that clearly outline the municipality's priorities and objectives.
Questions, comments? Counselor Griffin.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I believe it was in December that, uh, our contract with Eardan Burles ended. What does that mean for us right now while we're in a sort of an integrity limbo?
Thank you, Counsel, uh, Miss Heard, please.
Uh, through the mayor too. Counselor Griffin, you are correct. We are in integrity limbo currently, so we will work at our best to, to fill the position. However, staff really feel that it's important to have a right fit and the right, and the bright proponents. So if, uh, if we have an issue that arises, then we will be bringing a recommendation to council on how to manage that.
Supplementary, Counselor Griffin?
Thank you. Yes, uh, through you. Um, so looking at this report, I saw that you felt that, or that the governance committee rather felt that these applications were not sufficiently complete, and it sounded like in maybe at least one of the cases, the experience was lacking. And in other cases, I couldn't tell whether the experience was lacking or if the application simply wasn't clear enough about the experience. Do you feel that we didn't have any experienced people apply?
Through the mayor to Counselor Griffin, I don't want to comment on that on behalf of the committee. However, the memo, the memo that was provided to the governance committee does outline some of the, uh, the concerns. So I, again, uh, staff recommended to the committee that we, uh, take a look at the RFP process and, and make sure that we, um, are more specific about the requirements and, and the information we're asking. So the proponents understand what we're looking for.
Counselor Bachman, please.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just curious, is there a, a timeline expectation on, on the RFP?
Through the mayor to Counselor Bachman, it is our intent that following council direction that a new RFP be issued right away. So, um, our intention would be hopefully, sorry, my apologies, I'm not speaking very clearly, our intention would to have a, someone before, or hopefully if, if we receive, um, some applications that meet all the qualifications, that the governance committee will consider those applications and put a final recommendation to council for February.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. First report is from the Central Elgin Planning Office, CEP 0225. Application to amend the municipality's Central Elgin official plan, Canine 349 George Street. May I have a mover in a second, or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the proposed amendment to the municipality of Central Elgin official plan be refused as it is not consistent with the provincial policy statement 2024, the county of Elgin official plan, and the municipality of Central Elgin official plan.
Questions or comments from council? Seeing the, see, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion fails. Thank you. DFS 0125, temporary borrowing for current or capital expenditures. Mover in a second, or please? Counselor Connors, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the draft bylaw to authorize temporary borrowing for current or capital expenditures during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025 be approved.
Mr. Jenson, I'm sorry, Mr. Jenson, this is sort of a formality. Is that correct? Okay. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Well, we're into the bylaws. Bylaw 2025002, temporary borrowing bylaw. Mover in a second, or Deputy Mayor, Deputy Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaw 2025002 be read a first time and passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Other business? Any other business? Seeing none. If I get a mover in a second or closed? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that council proceed into closed session at 7:35 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality in relation to the 7th Avenue Drain Legal Update.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. We're in closed session. Thank you, folks, for coming. Appreciate your input.